I've registered to speak. That's not part of my responsibilities. I need to get that in writing. Everybody, everybody think about going home. That makes everyone smile.
Meeting call to order. Please join me in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mia Chow?
Here.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Seven present.
Great, welcome to the meeting tonight. We're gonna move right into the business. We start with three, the minute. Three point one, approval of the minutes, the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Need a motion to approve the regularly scheduled meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee of October nineteenth. Motion by Ms. Chun, second by Mr. Rossi, on favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. Number four, permission to enter, November second, twenty twenty-two. Any comments or questions on this section? Here none, need a motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lay, on favor say aye. Just a roll call please.
Mr. Lay?
Was there comment, questions?
I just had a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Oh, sure, sure.
I wanted to know the Bike Connector and Middlesex Community College, if that amount includes the required one-credit course that freshmen now have to take. So just a little bit of detail about those two expenses, please.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
I believe that's Ms. Desmond that would answer the Middlesex Community College information. She's the one that negotiated with Middlesex.
So, the Early College Promise Program is the program that allows a fifth-year student to attend Middlesex Community College for a full year while still receiving guidance and support from Lowell High School. And, and the idea around this, this is actually a national program, and we're one of the very few in Massachusetts that are doing it. We did it last year. This year, there's a few other districts that have joined us. But what this really allows us to do is provide students with technology, guidance counselor support with guidance counselors who they already are connected to because they were Lowell High School students, and the supports from Middlesex Community College. And the goal is for students to complete a year of college at no cost to them, and then hopefully continue on and receive a degree through our state system. And so, this cost is supported through Chapter Seventy money. So our students receive Chapter Seventy money even though they're a fifth-year student. And a portion of that money goes to Middlesex Community College for the supports that they're providing our students in the college credit. And a portion of that money stays with Lowell Public Schools so that we can provide that support and guidance for those students. And the students that are participating in this program hopefully are either first-generation college students or students that, you know, perhaps would not have this opportunity otherwise. Thank you. The Bike Connector is community schools, so I believe that's Ms. Phillips.
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, school committee members, this is actually an extension of a partnership that we have with Bike Connector. This is not the first year we've been with them. This is part of our community schools initiative, providing incentives and information to students around bike safety and other modes of transportation outside of just walking. So the students, they learn how to fix bikes. They learn how to ride safely in the streets, and I believe they also get a helmet. So when they ride off in their bike, we make sure they have their helmet and encourage bike safety.
And actual bicycles? Do they get bicycles too?
Yes, they do.
Great, sounds like, thank you.
You all said Ms. Doherty? Okay, any, no other comments? I think that was the motion by you, Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Lay. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty? Seven yeas, approved.
We're moving quite along here. Now we go to section five, which are the motions. We'll start with five point one, a motion by Ms. Doherty. Request the superintendent provide the committee with a plan to provide staff training on security, safety, security, safety protocols and implementation, including who would lead and be invited to the training, what would be covered, and when, and how often it would occur. Second by Ms. Morton, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the motion pretty much speaks for itself. I am looking to get a plan of how we can beef up our training for staff. Thinking specifically around the topic that was discussed at our last full meeting about the parent that was concerned about search activities at the high school, and just looking at what, what can we do to provide substantial training for staff throughout the district. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Lay?
Just wanna make a quick comment that it is a good motion. I like it when anything to do with security and safety, so I will support it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none, on the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. We now go to motion five point two, a motion by Ms. Chun. Request the school committee support effort to inform the community of question one on the upcoming November ballot, which proposes an amendment to the state constitution to establish an additional four percent tax on a portion of incomes over one million dollars to be used, subject to appropriation by the state legislature on education and transportation. Second by Ms. Morton. Ms. Chun?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, my colleagues. The reason why I put this up there is that I, you know, our job as school committee members is to advocate for our students and our families, and by educating them and informing them the importance of the questions on this ballot. And we obviously had two speakers a couple meetings ago, is that informing us about the fair share amendments. And this is the one thing that, you know, the more awareness that we, the more information that we provide to our families, it's it's the way that we should be as school committee members, and especially when this question that's on the ballot is geared towards providing, you know, the funds to help our students and our schools. I, you know, I am in favor of supporting, making sure that this is being appropriately allocated to our schools for our students. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Morton?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I agree with my colleague, and I'm certainly glad she brought it forward. You know, we're less than a week out from Election Day, and there's certainly a lot of information and misinformation that that is coming at all of us as conscientious voters here in the state of Massachusetts. I would just say, I mean, I think, as Ms. Chun has said, I think, you know, I certainly support question number one. I think it's something that is certainly as a member of a school committee, but as anyone who's committed to education, you know, this is a, this would be a huge step forward in allowing us to have the resources we need to ensure that our students are getting what they need in our classrooms across the Commonwealth, not just here at Lowell, but across, across the whole state. So I, again, thank my colleague for bringing this forward so that the committee has an opportunity to weigh in publicly about how we as individuals feel about this, this legislation.
Ms. Thompson?
Again, when Suzie brought this up, I'm sorry, when you brought this up, I should say committee member, Chun brought this up. I think that it was really important because of the messaging has been very divisive, and I think it's really important for our families, our students, to know that this does bring money in for the schools, and that's really important, and that's why we should be advocating for it. So thank you again, Ms. Chun, for bringing this forward. I agree that it is something that our parents and our families should know about, so thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Ms. Doherty?
I also would like to go on record as saying I support this ballot initiative. I think it is the right way to go as a state, and I think we definitely need the funds that have been earmarked for education. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Here none, on the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. We now go to section five point three, a motion by Mr. Rossi. Request the superintendent to report the total number of all professional teaching and administrative staff that are on emergency licensure waivers or regular waivers throughout the district. Second by Ms. Thompson. Mr. Rossi?
For the most part, motion speaks for itself. I think, I just, especially in the area of emergency licensure waivers, I just wanna make sure we're offering the correct professional development, if any needed, for those teachers so that they can remain in those positions, because I know that we do need these teachers no matter what in our system. So I was just curious, and so that we can have, like, good trajectory going forward. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would, I would like to ask if the maker of the motion would consider a friendly amendment to include in the list emergency license waivers and licensure's pending. Because that is another category, and I believe you can have your license pending indefinitely. And I'm just concerned, I wanna make sure that we are always getting the most qualified people in all instances. So would just be to add pending licensure as part of the report. Would you be comfortable with that?
Yes, yes, because then that would definitely mean that we could do something to help them to get their status from pending to moving forward, so yes, thank you.
Wonderful. Any other comments or questions? So the amended motion by Mr. Rossi. If no other questions or comments, on the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carry. We now go to motion five point four by Mr. Rossi. Request the superintendent to report on Lowell High School's security guard chain of command policies and procedures in regards to reporting students to school administration. How do security guards know when to escalate student incidents to the house office? Is communication verbal or written? What types of professional development are available for security guards? Second by Ms. Chun. Mr. Rossi?
Motion speaks for itself, much like Ms. Doherty's motion. I just wanted to follow up and kind of see what the protocols were in terms of what the procedures are and what the exact way that security guards know how to escalate a situation. Is it verbal or written? And what type of professional developments are available to them. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Any comments or questions from any of the members? Here none, on the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carried. We now go to motion, another one by Mr. Rossi, request the superintendent to report on the functionality of the bathroom in 1922 building at Lowell High School. Second by Ms. Doherty. Mr. Rossi?
Last motion, I promise. Yes, I'm just hearing, I would just... That there's issues with the students being able to find a bathroom in the old building at the high school. And so I just want to know what the... Have an update of what the functionality is and when they'll be on track and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rossi. Any comments or questions on this motion? Here none, on the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, this motion is carried. We now go to the next motion, which is 5.6, a motion by Ms. Morton, request a review of September 12, 2022 communication from the Lowell Board of Health with representatives from the Lowell Health Department slash Lowell Board of Health. Second by Ms. Thompson. Ms. Mon?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, the Lowell Board of Health is actually in a meeting right now at the... In the mayor's reception room. I did check in with Ms. Golden, so I had said when they're done, if they could come over, if we could postpone this motion until their meeting is over and they can come and speak to us to answer to this motion.
Okay, that's great. So we'll just table this motion towards later on on the agenda.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And we'll take it up when the Board of Health is here. We now go to the next motion, also by Ms. Mon, request a report from the administration listing all overtime payments for the current school year beginning July 1, 2022, and including any supplemental payments or contracts awarded to current Lowell Public Schools salaried and non-salaried staff. Second by Mr. Lee. Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Basically, what I'm looking for would be a listing for overtime payments that, you know, we know that we have some that are happening in... Certainly in facilities. I'd also want us to be able to look at with some of the... You know, my understanding is with some of the grants, some of the other funds that are come that may not necessarily be Chapter 70, that additional duties are being assigned to individuals and they're getting paid a stipend for that. I just want us to be able to have a full, comprehensive picture of how these monies are being spent, because it is going to be a matter of next year, we're not going to have the same kind of flexibility. So knowing what has been expended this year is going to be really critically important to us as we move forward in our budgeting process. But I do just want to be clear that I really am looking for a complete list. I would hate for us to be in a situation where, you know, we get a list and I wasn't clear in saying that I wanted grants included and that I wanted private funds included. I mean, things like that. I really want us to have the full picture and not to have to go back and forth trying to, you know, make sure we capture everything. So that would be my sincere request as we... If this motion passes. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? Here none, on the favor say aye, opposed say no, the ayes have it, motion is carried. That completed the motions with one pending. We now go to the Section 6, which are the reports of the superintendent. 6.1, we start with the response to motion 03, CFO of 92122, response to motion by Ms. Thompson regarding diversifying contractors and partnerships. Any comments? Ms. Thompson?
Thank you. And unfortunately, you guys will probably be hearing from me quite a lot. I have a lot of motion responses today, so first of all, I want to thank Ms. Turner. This is a great response. I love that they have a term called, you know, intentionality, and they have a plan called the Great Alignment, which makes me really excited. So I appreciate that information. I also love that they're also seeking out diverse vendors, which I think is important. I guess my only question would be, do we have... Because it seemed like Boston has a site that you can go to or that vendors can actually put on that they are a person of color, a woman, something of that nature. Do we have a site locally that has that information? I don't know if it's a Merrimack Valley site. Do we have any access to something like that for vendors? Or do vendors have access to something like that, I should say?
Mr. Superintendent?
Ms. Turner?
Currently, we don't have anything. We don't have a supplier diversity office, but what I am doing is developing a checklist for anyone that does plan on spending anything over a certain amount if we're going out to bid or soliciting quotes. I'm doing a step-by-step checklist, and one of the checklist would be to send the internal staff to those lists that Boston supplies. The lists don't just include Suffolk County, it does include Middlesex County as well. And so when we send the internal staff to those links, we're going to invite people. We're allowed to invite people to apply. So we are going to explore those lists and become very familiar with them, and hopefully we can develop our own for the school department.
I think that's excellent. I think that... I think one of the things that was shocking is that they still have paper processes, which was a little alarming. They need to digitize, so they say they are working on that. But I wanted to personally thank Ms. Turner for actually pledging what you're going to do, because in order to make change, we have to take action, and I really appreciated your intentionality, your actions, your transparency. And I think that because of that, there's going to be a lot of changes, so I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Any other comments or questions on that motion response? Here none. We now go to the next motion response, 6.2 of 04, COO of 97, 2022, by Mr. Rossi regarding internal hiring process. Any comments or question, Mr. Rossi?
Yes, I just wanted to thank you for the motion response. I guess one question I had, probably followed by one or two more. The first one is, where it states the Human Resources Assistant Director created a hiring tool to help organize the score in applicant during the screening process is the first sentence under A, right in the beginning, and then it says a record of all hires done after this tool was developed and is housed in the HR department. So when was after this tool was developed, I guess, is my question? Is there a date? So like, if I said I wanted to go in and do an audit, or if there was... If someone wanted to do an audit of this process, when would that date be?
Mr. Superintendent?
Dr. Hall?
I don't have the exact date, but I think it was 18 months to 24 months ago.
So two years ago?
Ms. Yan's been in the position for about three years. I know she started working on it when she arrived. I'm pretty sure it was implemented within a year of her arrival.
Okay, all right. And then just in terms of the panels, and I guess the... I guess you probably couldn't make this public, the rubric of what you're looking for in an answer for an interview, right? So... But I guess just... I guess I was looking for a little more explicitness too, and essentially just what is overall looked for. I see the list of questions and how the panel is created. But even in responses to this being published, I've heard, you know, that this wasn't always the case in the interviews, even as of this summer, and that the panel wasn't consistent with what this panel was supposed to be as of the summer. So I just... I just urge for consistency over time and just that there is true, you know, true genuineness to this and transparency to these protocols over time. Thank you.
So, Mr. Rossi, if I could just stress, the one that we were just looking for is for central office administrator positions, which Ms. Yan leads. So that if you got feedback from, say, a school or elsewhere, they might not have used that central office tool. I did provide a tool, a rubric, they used for that one particular position at the high school, so that may differentiate from what was used at central office.
Are you all set, Mr. Rossi? Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a quick question, because the request was for the superintendent to report on the internal hiring process across the district. So to that end, I do have a question. Where in the processes for internal candidates are their career ladders made centralized? So that... So for example, somebody is in a position in... Within the district, how do they know? Or are there career ladder opportunities? And if so, or if not, where are those... So let's say I go for a higher position. Is it somewhere listed in my record that I was either told about the opportunity for a position internally, and that I denied it, I didn't want to go for it? So where is that type of information held internally?
Mr. Superintendent to Mr. Hall?
So in regards to the hierarchy, that's really only evident in regards to who you report to in that chain. Many of our positions are only one deep, as you know, so there's not really a true ascension ladder. So I mean, if you're in a coordinator position and you're evaluated by Ms. Desmond, there's really only one place to go up from many of those positions that are very technical.
Okay, and to that point, look, so say if I was going for a position with Ms. Desmond, and I was like, I don't know if there are positions that are open, but like, let's say I was trying to get... Move up into a position that was there, is that... So Ms. Desmond, does she come and tell me, hey, there's a position that you should apply to? How do I know that? And then where is that mark that Ms. Desmond spoke to so-and-so, and they decided not to take such-and-such position?
So I guess what I was referring to that with Ms. Thompson, like, with many of the coordinators, there's only one person above them, which is Ms. Desmond. So there's not really any place that they could move up, so to speak, unless they moved to a principal position or an assistant superintendent position.
So I guess my question is, are there information? Is there information? So I just use that as an example, because she was there and you mentioned her. But is there information in records that opportunities are being brought to someone? If they're... Let's say somebody moved from substitute to long-term sub or teacher. Is there something that's being put in a record? We talked to this person about this opportunity. It's in their file folder so that there's note of it, of opportunities being offered?
Not necessarily. We just post the positions mostly according to the union rules for posting. Due to many of your ideas, we did start sending out emails this week to everyone in the district when many positions were posted, so there was some advancement on that. But I am a little leery about posting a position that someone may be vacating, so I do try to ask for permission to do that before it's broadcasted.
You all set, Ms. Thompson? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I just wanted to ask some follow-up questions. I've received numerous complaints, and I think that's why I'm so supportive of getting this HR audit to kind of be consistent, be transparent, follow our policies. So in some of the language that is in here, we talk about the positions. You actually gave the example of the questions that were asked for the Student Support Services Specialist role. And I just wanted to clarify, so for candidates to apply for that position, which I think we filled four of them at the high school this year, they needed to have the required licensure, right? That's what we... That's DESI regulations, and that's also our policy. But yet, my hearing is that there were people who were actually hired that had emergency licensure. And my understanding of DESI regulations is you can use someone with an emergency licensure if you post and get no one else for the position. Was that the case for these positions, Dr. Hall?
Ms. Doherty, so we didn't sponsor people for emergency license. People applied for their own licenses, and my understanding was that no one was placed unless they had a license. It was communicated from HR that people shouldn't be interviewed unless they had a license.
But were there candidates who applied that did have the licensure?
There were definitely candidates that had a license, a full... I think what you're saying is a full license, and then there were people also interviewed that had emergency licensure as well. And our information is DESI does not distinguish between those two categories of licenses.
And then just to follow... And I don't want to get into all the nitty-gritty of this, but a follow-up question would be, so when we have a position and we post it, what would be a reason, or when would we put a position on hold and not follow through with it? And then, let's say, repost it several months later? What would be a reason for that?
Well, the hiring is certainly all within, under ed reform of the building leader, so if the building leader did not feel comfortable with a candidate, they couldn't be forced to hire anyone. They could put it on hold.
If I could, I think I have a point of clarity. I think, because this is actually something that's come up from multiple angles, if I could, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Superintendent?
So there's two different types of licenses that seem to be interchanged in people's conversations. There's an emergency license that an individual can apply for, and then there's a hardship waiver. The waiver is the one that I think you're describing, Ms. Doherty. That's when no one applies, that's certified for a position that's qualified, and then we would apply for that waiver. The emergency license is a different tier of licensure that an individual can apply for. So there's emergency licensure, there's temporary licensure, there's provisional licensure, there's professional licensure, different types of licensure that individuals can apply for. I believe the emergency provision on the licensure was the newest one that was designed by DESI, but that's different from the waiver process that the school district can apply for when there's not a certified person. So it's the newest one, using the language of emergency versus hardship waiver. It does get, in some ways, interchanged, I think, in times of how people refer to it, but they're two different ones. In the waiver process, we've applied for in very, very limited circumstance, at least since I've been here, and that's only when you don't have anybody who's certified and qualified. That's an extensive process that the principal would submit to HR.
Thank you for that clarification, because perhaps I misunderstood. My understanding of the DESI regulation was an emergency license was also allowed to hire someone where licensure is required if there are no other candidates. And I think, as Dr. Hall has stated, we have had incidents in the near... Recent, not near, in the recent past, where people with emergency licensure were hired over people that had the required licensure. And that would be something I would want to look at more closely. But thank you for this information.
I don't know, Ms. Mon, did you have your hands up earlier before Mr. Rossi? Mr. Rossi?
I just think it also needs to be clarified that anybody can apply for an emergency licensure and pay $25, I believe it is, or $100. I mean, I applied, and I can be a superintendent, assistant superintendent, under my emergency licensure. I got one of those coming for your job, Mr. Superintendent. Just kidding. But all seriousness, I'm not prepared for that. That's the nerve-wracking thing with the emergency licensure, is that I would never want your job, right? But under an emergency licensure, I thought, hey, let me try this, right? And I actually got that licensure, and they're good until 2023. So yes, they're good because we need people in our systems, right? We need licensured people in any way, shape, or form in our systems, right? In our classrooms, in front of our students. And I know people who are working their tailhinds off to get all of their credentials done, to get their actual licensures done. But when it's used in a way, in an interview system, I think to get, like, in... To a interview, like, get ahead in an interview situation, I think that's a little different. And that's the point of clarity I kind of wanted to make, just because it's important to know those delineations in the system of waivers, too. Emergency license was created due to COVID to help to get these people into a classroom to get them jump-started in their careers, which so many people need and deserve, you know, and want to work for. And just to make that delineation, though, too. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on that motion response? Here none. We now go to the next motion response, which is 6. Hearing none, we now go to the next motion response, which is 6.3, motion for COO of 931, 2022 by Ms. Thompson regarding language assistance provided for those applying to roles within low public school. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good response, really thorough response. I guess I have one kind of question. And I'm glad that you already made the, the changes, Dr. Hall. So I appreciate you not having the thick, thick application that's not necessary right away. So I appreciate that. But I was just curious, have we reached out to have job fairs, particularly with CBA, CMAA, those types of organizations that would be willing to assist with language? So like, kind of have a one-stop shop right there? So that we could tap into that as a, I think, a good partnership in order to really assist with the language access and then get more people through the door? So I'm just curious if we've, we've thought about that as an, as an avenue?
We, we certainly have. I don't know necessarily about that organization, but we did attend a job fair earlier this week and they took 100 of the new CAF flyers and applications with them. So we are making progress. But I'll certainly check on that too, to bring some more organizations in. I did want to stress too, I know you brought it up a while ago, many of you, to make a more exciting job description that's also included in this packet as well. I know the one we've been using is probably several decades. All the many members wanted some differentiation. We had been working with a consultant to start that process. But some of the works there, if you want to review it.
Yes, I definitely appreciate that. I think that I made a note, it's not really page numbered, I don't think, but on the fifth page, it's the last page of the job description. One of the things I noticed, it doesn't really say anything about participating in teachings surrounding JDI or DEI principles. And so I think that that's something that's integral. Like, there's a lot of talk about, they have like the term equity and diversity and things thrown out. But I just was, if you're speaking about a teacher, having, having them participate in teachings, trainings for that concept, I think should also be a part of the job description. So, but otherwise, thank you very much. I do know that I had spoken to the executive director of the Coalition for a Better Acre and they were willing to support an opportunity for people to come in and they would provide the language access to, to help with the, with the hiring process. Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions on that motion response? Hearing none, we'll go to the next one. And you were not kidding, Ms. Thompson, I think the next, the next few are all yours. Not, not too bad. 6.4 is a motion response to COO of 1019, 2022 by no others than Ms. Thompson regarding employee feedback to improve the hiring process.
Oh, Mr. Mayor has a sense of humor like that. You have to laugh sometimes. Good, you know, a good response. I think that, you know, for me, the exit interview process is so important. It's important because it really does hone in so much information that I think is like expert testimony about what we can do better. What I will say is that I noted that I think there are some questions that are missing that, and this is for me, like going, putting back on my HR hat from a million years ago. One of the questions that I was, I was looking through that wasn't listed is, do you feel heard or supported in your role? Why or why not? I think that's such an important question to be asked of someone. What advice would you have to give someone who's assuming your role? I think would be another really great question. And then, do you feel safe to share your thoughts, concerns or issues? And again, you know, I think that oftentimes people are so, they don't really want to have the negative feedback, which sometimes does come, and it's not always negative. I think that we have to normalize feedback, whatever, whatever it is, whether it's good, bad or indifferent, because it's going to help us to have a stronger district. And so those are just some suggestions that I would add. But thank you very much.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I thought this was good information. I appreciate Ms. Thompson's additions, but I have a correction because that is not the complete motion that passed. I, if you look to the minutes, I had a friendly amendment asking that we get information, quarterly reports on types of complaints and nature of the investigations without employee names, any lawsuits, claim letters and MCAD filings. I think this information is very important for the committee to have. It's another way to measure the success of our HR role and the staff. So it's not included here in the motion and I would say the report is not complete because it doesn't include that part. So my question is, when will we see the first quarterly report about these investigations, these actions that are taking place? And I'm not looking to get any personnel privacy information. We're looking for numbers and types of complaints and numbers and types of investigations. So that would be my question through you, Your Honor, to the superintendent.
To, before I refer to Mr. Superintendent, thank you for bringing that up since this is an incomplete response to the motion because it was amended, but then it became a passed motion, which would have been a complete motion. What do you want to table this motion response? Or what do you like to have the superintendent administration provide a second part to this motion for the follow-up meeting before?
I, I think that if we could get our first quarterly report on the investigation, because I think this is a, a partial response and certainly if there's more information now that Ms. Thompson has weighed in with, you know, maybe adding more to those exit interviews and really tracking that we're getting them. Because I think employee, you know, you've got a list of, we need your keys, we need this, we need that. But to also encourage employees, take a few minutes and talk to us or, you know, provide this feedback because it is going to be beneficial. But for moving forward, I think this part of the report is fine, but I, I don't want to speak for the maker. But I do want that other piece. Thank you.
So from your point of view, if the administration provide quarterly report, this motion response would be satisfactory?
Yes, as long as we get that quarterly report asking for the investigations and all that. And I, I just refer back to the minutes because it's adequately recorded here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, now I refer to Mr. Superintendent, Superintendent?
Thank you. So our operations office works on a fiscal year quarter. So the fiscal year quarter is, fiscal year runs on 12 months. So every quarter would be three months from starting on July 1. So your next quarter will basically conclude at the end of this calendar year. It's the time when you typically get your quarterly budget reports. That would be our expectation with an operational request of quarterly. Typically, we make the assumption of academic quarters when it's an academic or teaching and learning request. That runs on a 10-month calendar. So that is, that runs on your report card schedule or your progress report schedule and it goes through the quarters as they work through the school year. So here, the assumption was that it's a fiscal year quarter because the HR office works on a 12-month calendar. So the end of your second quarter. Ms. Turner, end of fiscal year quarter two is, do you have that date off the top of your head? So that would be the timeline we're working from, if that works?
I think December would be great to get it in December. And I, I think that if you were planning that, the motion wasn't included in here on the report. That's why it came to my attention. I understand that, you know, it might not have been for tonight, but I think the motion doesn't include that amendment. Thank you.
I apologize, my microphone is off. No other comments in that motion response. We now go to the next one, which is motion response, item 6.5 to motion COO of 1019, 2022 by Ms. Thompson regarding chief equity officer involvement in the employment process. Any comments or question, Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank you for this report. I see that on the bottom, there's going to be, towards the end, I should say, on the first page, there's going to be a meeting coming up. So I look forward to either hearing about that. I don't know if that, if that's something that I could attend. I'm not quite sure what the parameters for, are for that. But I think that would really give me, I think this is a landscape meeting that you're having. So I think this would be really helpful for me to kind of gain some, just overall ideas about what, what's, what's going on moving forward. I will have to say though, and I, I, you know, I said this during the subcommittee meeting that we had, and it might've just been something I did not know, but I did not know we didn't have an HR director. And so I was surprised by that. And this is not to take away from Dr. Hall's doing amazing work in the team, DeRoth, and, and the team of people, professionals that are working. But I guess I'm a little concerned with how much of a need there is in HR and how pulled away you are to so many things, having to do, you know, things for the union and so on and so forth. So I guess my question is, and I had brought it up, is, is, is this the time that we are considering getting, securing an HR director that can focus on diversity? The challenges that we're having that are particular to this particular area? And things of that nature? So I guess that's my, my only question. Thank you.
Would you like a response from Dr. Hall, Ms. Thompson, or is that just a comment?
I mean, I guess I would love to know if the district is considering hiring an HR director.
Through Mr. Superintendent to Dr. Hall?
I can actually take that one. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so this is, so I appreciate it. This is under continuous analysis by the HR office as they're working through their staffing. There's a couple of different positions that are being considered and analyzed across between human resources and our payroll division. So we're looking across those as we move to a more automated system. We know one position we're going to be bringing to you. There may be a second one. I would like to continue with that analysis and bring you it in final form before committing. But there is an analysis currently underway as we look at current year, current fiscal year adjustments that we might want to recommend to the committee and then going into the next budget year that we may bring back to the committee. So once we complete that analysis, we'll bring them back for recommendation. We know there's going to be at least one recommendation, but before we, before I commit to that, I would allow the, like the office to finalize its analysis.
Thank you. Let's have another, I guess, quick question. I, I don't know if this is something Ms. Phillips would answer. I noticed that you're doing anti-bias training or hiring, excuse me, which is good foundation, good basic foundation, kind of akin to like discrimination hiring. Was wondering if you are also doing anti-racism hiring, which is different. So I'm just curious about, about that. I'm not sure who would answer that question.
Mr. Superintendent?
Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, School Committee Member Thompson, for that distinction. Through our landscape analysis and our implementation plan, the, the continued training is being planned for the hiring teams. And so that's something that we can very be, we can be more explicit about because you're right, there is a difference.
Any other comments on that motion response? Hearing none, we'll go to 6.6, response to motion COO of 1019, 22 by Ms. Thompson regarding 2018 HR audit. Ms. Thompson?
Oh, man, I swear, other people do talk. It just so happened that all my responses came in at the same time, which I appreciate all of you guys working hard to get them in so quickly. You know, I think that this, the whole idea of the, the 2018 HR audit, which took place, you know, brought, brought a lot to light and I've been like kind of pulling or pooling through it. One of the big things, as you know, and we've talked about this, is the comprehensive pay and classification study. And to, to date, nothing has happened with that because the, the bids didn't come through. So I guess I'm just concerned and I know there was like a, a, kind of a, a thought about not doing the audit. And for me, this kind of really hones in why there needs to be some work specifically done in that area. Because I think that it's really challenging to be in the district and then do a determination of what's needed financially or compensation-wise without it coming across as playing favorites or doing anything. I think there's a benefit, a transparency benefit from removing ourselves from that for the public to see this wasn't us. We didn't, like, this is somebody who came in that was neutral, that sees that this is what the district needs. So that's, I think, my only takeaway from this particular thing. I think obviously my colleagues and I kind of are going back and forth with this. And I think for me, this solidified the need for the audit. Thank you.
So we did receive a favorable response from a corporation that's interested in the wage studies. So I expect the RFP will go out by the end of next week.
Any other comments or questions on this motion response? Got hearing none. If anyone at home bear with us, we only have five more responses for Ms. Thompson tonight. Just kidding, that, that was the last of the motion response. Now we need a motion to accept the reports of the superintendents, 6.1 through 6.6, as a report of progress.
Motion made.
By Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Mon on favor of the eye, possibly no, the eyes have it, motion is carried. Now we go to new businesses. 7.1 is the budget transfer in the amount of $237,000. Any comments or questions? Ms. Mon?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I did have a question on the second one, the, the staff parking, the 22,000. How did that happen?
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
This is, and this is actually the new lease. You know how we went out to bid with two? Both of them did not, neither of them included parking, unlike the original lease. So not only did we go up in price, but we now have this additional cost.
How much did we go up in price?
Double. But in comparison to the other bid, they were both in that, they were both extremely high.
Is our, as we transfer this, is this $22,000 going directly to the city? Or is it going through the, the building account to the city?
It's actually, that's a good question. I haven't even figured out how to, I mean, how we're going to do it. I don't know, I would have to speak to the city CFO to identify. I, I'm sure we wouldn't cut a check. I'm sure it would be some form of transfer. Like, once we transfer it to the right account, then from the local budget staff parking account to the city. We, when I was here 10 years ago, we did have a staff parking account with $100,000 a year in it. And then because the city started taking it on as a maintenance of effort cost, we haven't been using that account number. So we're going, this transfer is to move the money into the staff parking account. And then I'll confirm with Connor Baldwin whether he wants to hit it with a inter-office transfer or if we'll cut a check.
Okay, okay. I'd be curious to the answer to that. If you can get back to us on that, that would be, thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the budget transfer? Hearing none in a motion to approve by Ms. Rossi, second by Ms. Chun. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We now go to 7.2, which is a consideration of options to support human resource. Any comment or question on this one?
This was the, Mr. Mayor, if I could to give a summary? Thank you, because this was a follow-on from the subcommittee. At that point, at the conclusion of the subcommittee, we committed to bringing the committee options along with the, a request for the HR department's recommendation, which Dr. Hall has done. I think one point of clarity, the competitive wage study, as Ms. Thompson referenced, that's something we've been working on for some time. We do now have an interested party. There's a second step when there's no bids to that proposal. So the competitive wage study is a separate, a separate study that will be conducted by an external provider. That RFP is already in motion. It was already put out one time, already returned with no bid responses. We then worked to advertise it additionally and then we'll repost that bid process, as you heard from Dr. Hall. So this action wouldn't require that. The other, the two options here at, at your disposal, which are in addition to the competitive wage, is a question of another audit, which you see in your packet, the 2022. We just undertook an audit of HR that was conducted by TNTP. That's the 100-page report within yours that was just conducted in June. So the recommendation, given the 2018 as well as the 2022 and the amount of actions that have to be taken, the HR department is recommending utilize staff time to support additional training, which does, was the second question that I've heard repeated. additional training, which does, was the second question that I've heard repeatedly from the committee, in bringing onboard an external provider to support that additional training. There are statutory requirements in who actually has authority around the hiring, but that training has been necessary and would be highly valuable, particularly here with the number of staff that have been hired additionally in the post-COVID era. So different hiring managers support their hiring committees to come to conclusions, and that training would be highly valuable. So the HR recommendation, as you see in Dr. Hall's memo, is to allocate those dollars and that staff time towards the additional training, go out to a provider who can provide that additional interviewing and screening committee training across the district, given that you already have two audits. But they did also, Dr. Hall provided a scope of services that could be put out to bid for an HR audit, having heard from the committee. So that option's also at your disposal. But again, the question in the, of the analysis from the HR department is the amount of staff time that would have to be allocated to both. Hence the recommendations there, but the options are both at your disposal, and we just need guidance on which direction the committee would like to go.
Any comment? Ms. Monn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Could you, I know that you had included in our packet that information from the audit. Could you tell me which page answers the questions I posed during our subcommittee?
Sure. Dr. Hall?
This is the HRS audit, right, that you're referring to?
You have a 2018 audit, which was referenced by Ms. Thompson, and then you have a 2022 landscape analysis, which was, which is, was just received.
The diversifying?
Yeah, that was.
So you can tell me in either of these reports where my questions get answered?
Dr. Hall?
I guess I don't really remember what the question was.
You don't remember my question, Jim?
I've done all of it.
My question was, what I'm trying, because I'm trying to be as clear as I can, what I want, what I, what I think we need to, in terms of information. When individuals are coming to me citing specific circumstances where the, they feel that the opinion of a screening committee wasn't respected, when they feel that, again, these questions around licensure weren't conducted appropriately, and people were given with emergency licenses as opposed to people with fully-fledged licenses that have been part of the district for many years, you know, there are a lot of these situations, and I, as I said at that meeting, between 12 to 15 in my, in recent memory, of very specific hiring processes that people have cited where there were problems. So what I'm looking for in these two reports that would tell me that that doesn't happen, that, that these auditors, these reviewers, as, again, I think as Ms. Thompson stated really clearly, as an external set of eyes, came into our HR office, looked at our materials, and showed us where that can't happen, where these, these concerns that people are raising to me as a member of the committee, where's the proof that I can show them to say that didn't happen?
So I do remember that question. I addressed it in the memo, but in the actual audits, it'd be very nearly impossible for an auditor to get into that level of detail. So they've noted in the audits that policies are in existence and generally followed, but you'd have to spend tens of, tens and tens of thousands of dollars to go through each and every hiring selection. Like I pointed out in the memo, there's been probably well over 2,000 people that have applied for 150 positions over the last six months. There were, you know, 10 to 15 people that lodged complaints. Really, there's a process that they can follow. Like even in the last week, someone brought a concern about a hiring committee. We launched an internal investigation on that, but additionally, they could go to their union, for example, they could go to their equity department to review the process, they could certainly go to the committee. I just ask that you guys let me know, or point out what you want looked at, and we'll certainly investigate it. We've, on a number of occasions, started searches over where they didn't satisfy the requirements of the superintendent or the search, or the HR department over the last year.
So my experience with audits have been that it's not necessarily a matter of going through 2,000 hiring decisions, that they generally, your external auditor will pick a random selection of cases, and then we then extrapolate from that to determine if policies are being adhered to. Generally, if you're, you know, out of 2,000, maybe you're pulling 50. Again, I'm not an auditor on purpose, but there's a pretty standard approach that professionals use to go through this process. So I think that they would be able to craft a review document that will allow them to pull the appropriate files and to be able to give us that information without having to go through every individual hiring, the documentation around each individual hire. I understand that it will take some time, I understand that it can be an imposition on staff, and I understand that we're looking at between 15 to $20,000. Quite honestly, I didn't come to this lightly, and it's not something that I think would be nice to have or fun to have. I think we need it, and, and, you know, again, this is not something that's specific to the last two months, or six months, or two years. It's an ongoing thing, and I think that it's important that we have external validation that every one of us can point to and say, you know, this was a professional audit that came in, that looked at our policies and procedures, and ensured that the Lowell Public Schools is behaving in the way that is in complete and total adherence with the hiring policies and procedures that this committee has put in place, and that, you know, the city expects us to adhere to. So, you know, I appreciate the response from the administration. It has not changed my mind. I would still want us to move forward with an audit. At this point, I'd also want to ensure that, you know, this was obviously a joint subcommittee. I would like representation from either/or, from an actual committee member to be involved in the process, in terms of interviewing auditors and helping to craft the kind of, you know, bid documents so that we can be really clear about what we're looking to get. But in this, you know, in this meeting alone, we've had two motions, multiple responses to previous motions, and now this response from the administration. Clearly, HR is something that we care deeply about, and that we're really looking to get some, some information to be able to make some good decisions. You know, if we're going to be coming into budget season, and, you know, there are ideas for an HR director, there are ideas for other positions, the best way for the administration to prove that is for us to have this kind of information that we can point to. So, you know, again, I will, you know, it requires a majority of the committee to make any decision, but I will say that I am still in favor of the motion that passed previously for us to conduct an audit of the HR office to determine the, our adherence to our established policies.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, M. and I would like to add to that. We did vote option one unanimously, and I think that's where we need to continue. I would like to add some clarifying language to option one. I think that we are looking for an auditor to come in and meet with the school committee beforehand to hear our concerns, and provide a full report to the school committee, including a presentation afterwards, and that in addition to that, I'm not so much against best practices. I think that's fine, but the focus really should be, and I've got notes everywhere, as part of the audit, to look at current HR practices specifically around compliance with mass general laws, and I would say consistent compliance with mass general laws, desk regulations, and Lowell Public School policy, because I think that it is with this transparency that we have this audit that's very focused on this area, that we are going to be able to foster the type of culture that, where the principles of diversity, equity, and inclusion can really prosper. So I think that we need to go forward with the audit, and I love Ms. Martin's suggestion that somebody from one of the subcommittees actually sits on the review or whatever, but I think the language in the RFP should be specific to, as I've stated, and I'm happy to repeat that from my scribbling notes if it's needed afterwards, but I think that's where we need to be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? If none, let me just clarify, so this is an interesting vote. It's not a yes or no vote, correct, Madam Secretary? Just to clarify, because you were picking option one or option two?
Yeah.
So we would, we'd all call, but each member will have to select, vote on option one, option two, correct?
Well.
It's not a yes/no vote, is it?
Yeah, I think you got a...
I think it was option one or two with the, I assume you were making that in the, I don't know, were you making what your recommendation was?
We voted option one.
Uh huh.
At the September 20th meeting.
Correct.
We had, we asked the HR Subcommittee and Equity to discuss it so that we could fine-tune the language. The subcommittees met the following week, it was not on the agenda. So that delayed another couple of weeks. Then the subcommittees got to me, it was on the agenda, and the administration said we don't really want to do an outside audit. We have these other audits, which, this is the first time I heard about this audit, this is the first time I've seen it. I think it deserves looking at, but not in a full meeting. So at the full meeting, we voted to do this, this option, which was to do an HR audit. That's already been decided. What we discussed in subcommittee was fine-tuning the language, because we want to be very clear about the scope. We're not trying to do this whole thing. We want to specifically look at our compliance with those areas that were discussed, and we want to be part of that process, in terms of helping the auditors to understand what our concerns are and getting a presentation back, not filtered through the administration, but directly from the consultants that we hire.
Okay, and again, for clarification, the subcommittee met as a result of the motion that was passed for an audit, and the joint subcommittee also recommend the audit, is that correct?
Yes.
And...
Those minutes haven't been provided.
That minutes have not been provided, okay. And given the, so the, the item here for, for a vote here, what are we voting on for option, which option are we voting on?
We already voted option one, unless there's some motion to change that vote. What I'm proposing is, and that, you're right, Ms. Sheehan, I'm sorry, it should have been in the form of a motion, the language, because that's what we were supposed to discuss tonight.
Tonight.
What was going to be the scope of the HR audit. So I'm proposing specific language be added to the RFP, so that we're very clear what our focus is and what we, and that, the expectation, meeting with the committee before and after all that. We're looking for, you know, I'm not going to repeat what Ms. Martin said, but, so my motion would be to add this language to the RFP, but option one was already voted on.
Okay. So the language to the RFP, which, combination of Ms. Monn to have one, at least one, maybe two members of those, both cheerwomen to be on the selection process.
There you go.
And Ms. Doherty requests you have the report from, from the auditor as well, so, but that being said, what's in front of us tonight, it's a need a motion to approve options, is that, is that, but we are amending the language to include what we just talked about, is that we're voting on?
Yes, I believe that we are voting on the language for option one.
Okay, so for, Mr. Lay, go ahead.
Thank you very much. So yes, we, last week, the joint committee did meet, and we discussed, and we did decide that we want to wait on to have the opportunity to work on HR and the new administrative that we have now, since the, the audit that we got was, since 2018, and I'm a little bit surprised that our colleague has changed their mind so quickly that they want to go ahead with the audit right away. And I just want to urge the, our colleague to wait on a little bit to let us have the opportunity, the HR and, and the new administration, to have the opportunity to work with us before we proceed spending money on the audit. I would rather like to have the opportunity to use that money on something else, instead of spending it on an outside firm to audit. Thank you.
Any other comments? Ms. Monn?
Just if I could, I, I just want to be clear, the initial motion to request the HR audit came from me. During the joint subcommittee, I once again said I was looking for an HR audit. Tonight, I have once again said I would like an HR audit. I don't know how clear I can be about my desire to have an HR audit. What I would like to say is that from what we've been presented tonight is, in my mind, a report of progress. We simply need to accept it as a report of progress. The motion to have an HR audit has been approved both in, both at the main subcommittee, and in the main school committee, as well as at the subcommittee. Both have, all have been in alignment in what we were looking for. What we were anticipating receiving tonight was a sample of the scope, that then the committee could look at the scope as it was recommended by the administration, and then be able to fine-tune and ensure that additional language points such as were brought up by Ms. Doherty, we could introduce tonight, and we would have been done. We would have completed our, our kind of review of the recommendations of the administration, and we could go out to bid. So at this point, we're looking at one, you know, we need to go through this again. So if we could, I think the only motion we really need to consider tonight would be one I will make right now. And I would make the motion that the administration provide to us their recommendation for the RFP to go out for an HR audit to accomplish the goals that have been expressed by both the original motion that were discussed during the subcommittee, and that I think there were some additional things that were, that had come up this evening. I trust the administration has all that information. So if we could get their recommendation for the beginnings of an RFP, we can then review and then go from there.
Thank you, Ms. Monn.
I'm sorry, I think the superintendent's trying to get you.
Did somebody say something? Ms. Doherty?
If I could just say, we have that. Option one is their recommendation for an RFP. So why do we have to wait another two weeks?
Well, I mean, I don't think that that defines the scope, though, does it?
If I could...
It does, it talks about the scope. I've just added some language to number one, a comprehensive review, assessment of recruiting and hiring, diversity, equity, inclusion. I don't have any problems with that. I felt that they were giving us, was that your intention? I believe it is their intention. I don't want to wait another two weeks. This is what happens.
I understand, Ms. Doherty.
We keep delaying, delaying. If you look at option one, it's, it's saying the City of Lowell seeks to obtain the services of qualified, it's giving us the language here. I can pass it. The other thing with this is it was not emailed to us, it was on the website, so many of us, like I didn't see it until I called Ms. Palazzo and said I didn't see an email, because we had discussed having it for tonight's meeting, and the superintendent asked if he could provide it on Monday, because it wasn't going to be done in time, even though the motion was made September 20th. It wasn't going to be in our packet for Friday. So I think that's why there's some confusion, that if, you know, we work during the day, so if you didn't happen to go online and see it, you wouldn't have noticed that it was on there. I mean, I think it was posted Monday, but it wasn't in our packet, so that's why there's some confusion. But I would like to ask my colleagues if we could move forward and just make the language changes so that we could not wait another two weeks for a recommendation when they have provided it.
Okay, Ms. Doherty, are you all set?
I am, thank you.
Okay, so just going back to Ms. Monn, the motion was passed, you intend, and your requests are very clear, Ms. Monn. What we are working with here is the language that is right on the agenda, which is looking at options, I was just trying to clarify it, but based on your comment, it sounds like if we could change the word here, as you suggested, to accept the report that presented by the superintendent before us as a report of progress, we can take a vote on that one first, and then we can take on the amendment as a motion on the floor to add the, the language of including... to add the, the language of including up to two representatives from the two Subcommittees, and also to have the report provided Subcommittee. So we have two order of business to complete in this one item here. Madam Secretary?
Connie doesn't have a second.
I'm sorry?
This one doesn't have a second.
No, a second?
No.
Not because we.
When it's under new business, it's not really considered a report of progress.
Okay.
It's, it's to be, action to be taken.
Okay. So are we, can we change the language if it's under new business? Because it sounds like most of the report of progress rather than to vote on an option.
She was adding to it. She was approving, I, I don't know, I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth.
The way I, what I believe Ms. Doherty said was she was approving option one with the addition of to have the auditor meet with the School Committee, which you said two, I believe, or like he had suggested, to HR, the HR and the Equity, Access, provide a full report and presentation to the Committee. Focus should be on, to look at the current HR practices, compliances, make sure they're consistent with Mass General laws and DESI, as well as the Lowell Public School policies. Is that correct?
That is correct, and that would be my intention in terms of just adjusting the language of the RFP.
Okay.
And Ms.
So to make, to make it a, a voteable action item. So we are, we, we act, the vote here then would be a vote to accept the report as a report of progress with the added language. So the vote is for a report of progress with the understanding for an audit with the added language. Would that be acceptable?
You really don't need to accept it as a report of progress. It's for action to be taken.
Right.
Okay.
It's just a, it's the, we asked for a recommendation on the RFP language. We got it.
But I don't have a second.
I, 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 for one, I, for one, I understand your intent. But I'm pretty sure, I don't want to speak for any other member on the Committee here. Maybe they might be taking a vote. They might not fully understand, or may the public watching, there's some confusion here. So I need to be specific in the language before I do the roll call. Are we voting, Ms. Martin again, or through Madam Secretary? Please clarify succinctly. Are we voting for an audit? We vote for an audit, which is option one, so we can do like a yes/no vote with the added language, with the added amendment. Is, is that agreeable? Okay, so Madam Secretary, I believe you can probably say sort of the whole thing one more time in, in a sentence and paragraph format.
I only.
Mister Mayor, can I?
I don't have a second for that one. I have Ms. Doherty making it, but I don't have a second. And I have the other one that Ms. Martin put on the floor, but I don't have a second for that, so.
How come you have two?
I'm rescinding mine.
You're rescinding.
Ms. Doherty, I believe you're comfortable rescinding yours. You're making a new motion that we want to move forward with option one.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we'll do a follow-up motion about the language.
Okay.
To add your language in?
Yes.
So you're going forward with option one?
And I'm seconding that.
Seconded by Ms. Doherty.
Mister Mayor.
Before we take a vote, Mr. Lay?
May I have, just like I said in a, in a couple of minutes ago, we agreed to have the opportunity to work with the, the new HR that we have now. And I just want to ask my colleague to, to vote no on this motion, so that we can have the, so we can do that, have the opportunity to work with the new HR that we have.
Okay. We have a vote, we have a motion, and we have a second. Madam Secretary, please roll call.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay, approved.
Ms. Martin, you have a motion on the floor? Is it Ms. Doherty?
Had that.
My motion would be, do you need me to say it again? The language changes that I asked for.
Do you want me to say it? Well, I have.
Yes, say, and, and I'm wondering if, would we also be including your motion on that? So I have specific language changes. Ms. Martin's motion was to have two Committee members be part of the review. So if we could combine those two. I think the Chairs of the two Subcommittees, I'm fine with that if you guys are. If you don't want it, you know, but, so I would make my motion, my language change motion, and combine that with two members of the School Committee that sit on the review.
Motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin.
Do you want to read it again, Ms. Sheehan?
I'd love to. Okay, so I'm going to get rid of that. Okay, so the scope will be to have the auditor meet with the School Committee and provide a full report and presentation when completed. The focus should be to look at the current HR practices. Compliance is consistent with Mass General laws, DESI, and the district's policies for the RFP, with the Chair of the Equity and Access and the Human Relations, Labor Relations Chairs sitting on said Committee.
And we have a second. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. I, I see the Board of Health Department, URAP, just came in, but we just have only one more item to, to cover. Hopefully this take less than five minutes.
Let's hope.
So the eight, section eight is professional personnel, eight point one, donated sick days. Need a motion to approve by Mr. Lay?
Question.
Sure, Mr. Lay, go ahead.
Could you give me the background on, on this?
The sick day?
Just sick leave, yes.
As a Superintendent?
Thank you. There's an agreement.
Why are we doing this?
There's an agreement with our unions that they can move sick leave and sick time amongst their members so that the bank doesn't change, but it moves and it transfers from one member to another based on need. Is that an accurate summary? Dr. Hall?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, but you also want to make a motion to approve that by you as well, Mr. Lay? Seconded by Ms. Chun. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Ms. Chun? Mr. Rossi? Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Earlier, we had tabled item 5.6, and now we need a motion to suspend the rule to take that item again out of order. Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Thompson. Item 5.6 is request a review of September 12, 2022, communications from the Lowell Board of Health with representatives from the Lowell Health Department, Lowell Board of Health. Seconded by Mr. Rossi. Ms. Martin, would you like the Board of Health to make a presentation, or would you like to go first?
Just briefly, this Committee did receive a communication from the Lowell Board of Health regarding immunizations at the start of school. They had some recommendations. I wanted the Committee, all of us, to have an opportunity to have the, the Board of Health and the Lowell Health Department be able to present in front of us tonight to kind of take us through the letter that they had sent, so we can ensure that we can make some, whatever decisions and accommodations we need to make to ensure that we're in compliance this year and that we can set up a, a system that hopefully will function better next year. So I would defer to the, the Board of Health and the, who'd like to go first? Thank you, Ms. Keegan.
I'll be brief. Joanne Keegan, Chair of the Lowell Board of Health. I'll just give a little brief history on the letter. So back in July, the, Ms. Golden, the Health and Human Services Director, and the School Administrators and the Manager met to talk about a number of things. But one of the items was that students, we needed to really follow the law in terms of Mass General law around immunizations and students being, getting medical clearance and ensuring that their immunizations are done prior to sitting in a classroom. And so I guess, you know, everyone seemed to be on the same page back in July. And then when schools started, the school nursing unit, who works for the Health Department, was reporting students starting school in, not just being assigned a classroom, but actually sitting in a classroom that weren't, that had not, had their immunizations medically cleared. The Superintendent and I had a conversation about it. He assured me that we were all on the same page around what needed to be done. And he was, you know, obviously very aware of the law and that, that, that the staff in the schools were aware of it. And there seemed to be some misunderstanding in our communication with Family Resources around whether students could be assigned to school and sit in the classroom, or just assigned to school. And we understand why you want them assigned to school, obviously, so they can, you know, get the resources they need, maybe get medical resources, get help to get their, their immunizations. And, and then, so after our conversation, we continued to have reports from school nurses and large numbers of students sitting in classrooms that had not been medically cleared. And so obviously, the background of concern was even more fervent when you, I'm sure you're all aware that we still see measles and now polio. We're seeing polio in wastewater in certain states. And so obviously, vaccines continue to be important to the Health Department. And so the, it was discussed at a Board of Health meeting, and the Board asked me to send a letter to the Superintendent with a copy to the School Committee, so we were all on the same page and we could have the conversation about the importance of students not being in the classroom until they get medical clearance. And this year, we were fortunate. The School Department helped out. We helped out. We were preemptive in terms of, we were not, we don't have a backlog of people. In years past, there have been backlogs of students waiting for their immunizations to be reviewed by school nurses. But we paid nurse, school nurses overtime to come in, and we didn't have a backlog of students. So there was no reason for students to be waiting for their immunizations to be reviewed. Everything was sort of up to date. So that's what prompted the letter, was just so that everyone would understand. And sort of the Board said, "Well, we want to get this out there and get it, you know, on the agenda so that next year, everyone's on the same page." And we've had, we've had this problem in years past, and so let's preemptively ensure that it doesn't happen again next year. You know, I think one of the discussions was, "It's too bad that kindergarten registration doesn't happen earlier, which could help us in terms of reviewing immunizations." But this, you know, we don't get into the business of telling the School Department what to do. We just encourage them to follow the public health laws. And so that's what prompted the letter. And Lisa can maybe just talk about what this, how the Health Department worked with folks to ensure that the ways in, in, that students come in and the school nurses are notified so that we can proactively help get kids their vaccines before they're actually sitting in the classroom.
Lisa Golden, the Director of Health and Human Services. Joanne did a great job. I don't think I need to take much of your time up. So there is a spreadsheet that the Family Resource Center starts, and they check the, and when the nurse reviews the record, there's a yes or a no, whether the students can start. We had a rocky start to the school year, which I think in most places is a little bit of a rocky start. Going into November, we've, we've got a well-oiled machine and we're doing pretty good. So hopefully, next year, we have a better start to the, to the school year. But we're doing pretty good now that we're into November, so hopefully, we can have a better start to next year, but thank you.
Thank you both for being here. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I wanted to thank them both for staying and, and sharing that information with us. My colleagues might recall, I had a motion on that I ended up withdrawing to look at when we're doing the pre-K and kindergarten enrollment, because in previous years, we did it in the winter. And now we're doing it right up into August. And I think it is causing some of this problem with getting our immunizations verified in time for school. And many of you who are new this year may recall, last fall, a year ago, we had nearly 400 students is the number, I think, that a month into the school year were still not attending school. Many of them with verification records issues, which I know it's way better than it was last fall. But our goal is to, you know, do it better every year, to look for improvement. So I think I'm hearing that it's still not there and that we need to revisit this idea of doing enrollment all the way into the summer, because we don't have the staffing to really provide those supports. And I would like to ask the Administration to perhaps draft some sort of recommendation for us that looks at the issue, that we went from doing the registration in February and March to having these multiple tiered registrations that happened in August, which I had asked specific numbers, but I don't think we ever got them. I asked at the meeting, the night that I withdrew the motion. But I would, I do think it, we need to look at that issue. Thank you.
Ms. Golden?
Yeah, I, I was just going to add something. Part of it isn't even just reviewing the records. There was a study yesterday that healthcare has a 50% vacancy rate of nurses. Right now, I'm, I'm getting a lot of calls to give flu shots, including to pediatric practices, because some of the, the offices have no nurses to give vaccines. So right now, if someone's trying to get into a new practice, the wait is three to four months to get into a practice. So even if someone's trying to get, book a physical with their doctor's office, they can't get in. So by moving up the, the enrollment, like, because if you say to someone you need to get a physical, it's going to be a long wait to get into the practice, and that is what the issue is. I mean, it's nice to say that everybody needs shots to get into kindergarten, but people don't know that, and it takes a long time to do it. So, I mean, even if you don't move up the kindergarten, I mean, if there's an information session or something so that these people know, call your doctor to make an appointment, I don't know, something to get out there. Because if they're, if we have registration in May, they're not going to get an appointment with their physician until October. So we need to do something to let them know, because they're just not going to be able to get in. If we called right now, if I called my doctor right now, I'm probably not going to get an appointment until, I don't know, April. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I, I would like to say, and I think it really speaks to, to both points that I just made. In my mind, what I think we should be considering is that there are two separate processes going on, registration and then assignment. You know, we made, I think, a good move in terms of pushing back our assignment kind of timing, because it allowed us the opportunity to keep seats available at all of our schools. Some were, you know, so that if a student did present in August, you know, September, they wouldn't be relegated to only one or two options, that they could still have options within, you know, the full complement of Lowell Public Schools. But I do think in pushing that back, we pushed back the registration, so it kind of, you know, it, it pushed everything back. And in my mind, it seems like we should be able to offer the opportunity and begin encouraging the opportunity for students to begin registering. We could do it in that same February/March timeframe. And you're just presenting that, the registration goes on for three, four months. Assignments don't start until July, until June, July. That allows us to maintain that, a, a choice that was, I think, very consciously made, to maintain open spots across, you know, across the district, so people can have a fair chance of getting into schools that they choose. But it also allows us to push forward that, I mean, it's paperwork, and we all recognize that there are challenges to paperwork. To Ms. Golden's point, there is not a doctor's office in the world that you can get into in less than three and a half months at this point. So I do think it makes a lot of sense to have our, our families getting their information in as soon as possible. And then assignments, just simply wait until we're ready to do that, that process, whether it requires a lottery or not, or, you know, all of that can happen later in the, in the year. But getting the information in could happen earlier. So I mean, to Ms. Doherty's point, I think if the Administration could take a look at that, you know, now's the time to do it, before, you know, we get through this year and then we find ourselves once again in the craziness of the beginning of a school year, which we all recognize can be more than a little rocky.
Any other comments or questions?
I'm sorry, just, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate it very much that you guys were, were able to come and share this with us directly. Thanks very much.
Thank you both for being here. Mister Superintendent?
If I could too, it's been an extraordinary time in terms of partnership with the Health Department, the Board of Health. Ms. Keegan has played multiple roles, so the new members on the Committee. Ms. Keegan was our, our expert during the time of COVID shutdowns. I want to thank you again personally and publicly. And Ms. Golden is now, has moved seamlessly back into the role. And Ms. Golden is now, has moved seamlessly back into the role of Health Department Director. So it's a, it's nice to be able to have stability with working with the two of you and please continue on and thank you for your good work. Appreciate the partnership.
Thank you. No other comments or questions? That motion is on favor. Say aye opposed, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is passed. Before we adjourn, any announcement? I have a quick announcement. I want to wish Kathleen Sheehan, the sister of Mary Sheehan, of extraordinary Madam Secretary here, a happy birthday. All right? Happy birthday to her. Need a motion? Ms. Doherty?
Sorry, I have to ask for a point of personal privilege.
Absolutely.
I don't know if you all received calls or emails about what happened with busing on Friday. There were several children and I think we had a substitute bus driver and combining routes. I mean, I realize we have a shortage of drivers and if somebody calls in sick at the last minute, but the concern is I had several mothers talk to me about not being able to get through to anybody and not knowing for, you know, like an hour where their first grader was and how terrifying that is. And some of the protocols that weren't followed, for instance, if, if you're, if no one's there to drop off your first grader, you're not supposed to leave him on the street, right? You're supposed to bring him, I believe it's the Moody School. Well, the students were brought to a different school, or maybe it was they were supposed to go to a different school and end up in the Moody, I don't remember the details. But what I would, the things that were concerning to me, that the Family Resource Center website said they closed at three, I thought we already talked about updating that. We're waiting for a report about having extended hours, but at least to have accurate hours. I believe three o'clock is their summer hours. And that there is a number that parents can call. That's very important. I, I think that, so I'd like to hear if there's any update from the administration. I'm sure that you're all aware, or at least the people who work with transportation are aware, that this happened.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Yes, please do bring any concerns to my attention. We do contract with an outside vendor on transportation. They do run significant extended hours, as does our Transportation Department. Dr. Hall, do you have any further?
We're looking at that to be able to have the phones forwarded to the Moody in that situation, which was the initial response. I don't believe it's happened yet, but that's the recommended solution, but we can update you on when that's effective.
I guess I'm looking for some assurance that this is taken seriously and it's not going to happen again. If you are the mother of a missing six-year-old or a loved one of a missing six-year-old, it's a scary thing. You're talking four o'clock on a Friday night, it's going to be getting dark. We need to have a foolproof system in place. And if I could just, from the floor, ask the, make a motion that we get a report on what's going to be done to make sure this doesn't happen again. And, and, because I, I need parents to know, we, we're listening and we see the urgency of it and we're going to do something about it.
Because that's a motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Rossi. On the face of the eye, opposed, say no, the ayes have it. Motion is carried. Need a motion to adjourn?
I have a sorry motion for personal privilege. I'm so sorry. Two things. On our calendar, we have, we do have a scheduled committee meeting on December 21st. So if that's something that we are looking to change, we might want to look into that earlier rather than later. And then I just want to wish my colleagues on both sides, today is the day we got elected into our positions, so happy election day.
Congratulations. Ms. Thompson, you brought up that, was that a request to move up the subcommittee?
To change the date, yes. It's, it's, again, I don't know if people want to have it the week before or what, but typically it's a very difficult week for people, is the week of Christmas, so.
Sure. Maybe that's something that the administration and couldn't work the schedule with the subcommittees after to see what you did do above everybody. Mr. Superintendent?
I'd make a recommendation to cancel the meeting. It's a, it's the, it's the week right before Christmas, because if you move it up a week, you're only talking about 48 hours from December 7th until we post it. We've had that challenge before. So if you want to do this far out, and I would say, this far out meaning it's a monthly time, we would make sure that anything we have on the agenda, we put it on the agenda for December 7th. We work with the intent to actually cancel it. Moving it up a week is not going to be, I don't think, very productive for the committee's time. So that would be my recommendation if the committee is so inclined to take action.
Do we need to take a vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're looking to cancel.
Looking to cancel and to just have that one meeting, put all the agenda on the 7th. Motion by Ms. Thompson, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call, please.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?